I'd like to recognize a couple of our council members in the audience this evening. They're in the back. Thank you for attending. The way that this meeting works is I'll go ahead and offer the invocation for the beginning of the meeting this evening, and then I'll have one of the other commissioners lead us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, we'll go ahead and offer a prayer to start the meeting. Our Father in Heaven, as we come before thee in prayer this evening, we're thankful for the opportunity to be here and represent the city in handling the affairs and the business thereof. We're thankful for the blessing of safety that thou has given us to have us all arrive here. Please watch over our families while we are away from home. Please watch over this meeting, that those in attendance that wish to speak will be able to speak freely, share their ideas, thoughts, and expectations of what we should be doing as a city. And please bless us and watch over us as people representing the city, that we can be attentive, we can listen to the people that are here, and try to find a common ground. We're again thankful for the opportunity to be here. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. And I need a commissioner to lead me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Lead everybody, please. Anderson, thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda this evening is an approval of the agenda. Commissioners, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as is unless there are any changes we need to make note of.
This Commissioner Tupoe, I may make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
This Sheil, I second.
Got a first and a second on the agenda approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is set this evening, as is. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from our meeting of May 17th. We've all had a chance to receive those in our email. If there are any changes for Melody, please let her know at this time, if you have not already. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes to put those on record.
This Sheil, I would move that we approve the planning commission minutes from May 17th, 2023.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I second.
We got a first by Sheil, a second by Mitchell. All in favor of the minutes from May 17th?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we do have one abstention. Tupoe was absent. At this time, and at any point in the meeting as well, it's time for the commissioners to declare any reason for an abstention or conflict they might have with one of the items on the agenda this evening. I do not have any at this time. Commissioners, anything we'd like to put on the record? All right, looks like none for this evening. We'll move to our first item, the conditional use permit. This is a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the city council for a four-story hotel project, C-23-06, located at 84 North Primavera Lane. The applicant is Reflect Architecture LLC, and I'll turn the time over to staff for the report.
Thank you, commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit to build a hotel located at 84 North Primavera Lane. Zoning regulations require hotels to obtain an approved conditional use permit. The applicant is proposing a hotel with 123 rooms. The proposal includes 145 parking spaces, which satisfies the parking requirements. The hotel did receive a 60-foot height waiver by city council on January 12th of 2022, and the proposal includes a building height of 57 feet, 10 inches tall. The parcel is zoned service commercial, which is C2. The area is designated in the general plan as regional commercial. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and finds that it meets the standards as outlined in the general plan and zoning ordinance. The building elevations and finishes are aesthetically pleasing, and appears that this development will be a welcomed addition to the city. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve C-23-06, allowing for a hotel to be located at 84 North Primavera Lane, and that's based on the following findings and subject to the following conditions as seen in your report. Andrew had the elevations pulled up there. You can see the stucco, hardy siding, some metal trim work. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions you have.
This is Sheil. We had one comment come in through the internet, and it talked about height, which I don't know that we can do anything about height because it's been approved by city council. But it talked about lighting, and everything we always have on ours and our conditions, it talks that all lighting within the project development will be directed inward to the site. Their complaint was, you know, the light in the sky and taking the night sky away. I don't know how you regulate that. I don't know if the other hotel, what they're doing as far as if it's inward or outward or upward, but that's just my question is how do we regulate that and know that the lighting is what is asked to be in the conditions?
Yeah, condition seven does state that. I'll just read it here, or condition number eight, that all lighting within the project development will be directed inward towards the site. So that's, any lighting needs to be directed in towards the site.
But do we regulate, do we actually inspect that? Is that inspected? That's just my question.
Well, just to let you know, the partner hotel to this, to the northeast, I did have to come back because the electrician had to put in a different canopy light because they weren't able to get and finish out the ones with the ones they brought in. I had to have them go back and had, had what I call fins. They used to be in the filming industry, but all these lights can be made with covers, and they just bend them down till, we can't stop the glow from going out, but a direct beam, they can. And so I had to literally go up and meet with him. It actually was a night after a planning commission that we were, our time was available, and I went up and we went through and fixed nine lights several years ago. So yes, we do, you know, we had a complaint, and someone, I went up and, you know, when it came to my attention, I got a hold of the hotel, and they got the electrician, and we went out that night, and I pointed them all out, and we got them fixed. So he just went up, he had a scissor lift and went and fixed them. So, hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it answered. I appreciate that.
This Hanson, is, in our city, do we have a shortage of hotel rooms, or are we sufficient based on what the city thinks? Is there an opinion one way or the other?
Well, that would be based on the market. I mean, the city doesn't regulate the number of hotel rooms. The free market regulates whether there's demand or not.
So the city wouldn't necessarily have an opinion one way or the other, whether or not we need or think we should have additional hotels?
I've never seen the city identify an actual number of rooms. I could count. I haven't even seen economic development, who has a lot of very precise data out there, have that data point. So, I don't think that the city has a number that we're, that we think is the right number.
Just curious.
Well, I will tell you this, compared to St. George, we're way below the number, and even Hurricane has more hotels than Washington does. I think they might even have double the number of hotels in Hurricane.
Come on. Is that real?
I'm serious. There's...
Wow. I mean, obviously, we're a tourist destination, and they fill up, and so I was just curious if the city has some metric that they track on that.
The way, the way it works, though, is as much money as, you know, these people are wanting to spend on this hotel, they're gonna have the best data of all. They're gonna be doing their numbers, because they don't want to build a building that doesn't have any customers. So, I mean, they wouldn't be doing it if they didn't think there was demand for it.
Yeah.
And normally, normally, if a lender looks at this deal, they're gonna require a feasibility for a new location. So they usually do a feasibility study to make sure it makes sense before they put any money into it.
I think I'm, in the back of my mind, I'm kind of wondering, not specific to this project, is if we should be seeing more hotels come to Washington City. Like, we had the Arctic Spa, little thing or whatever. We had the one, the Best Western that came, and I don't, I don't recall seeing too many of them. I was just, in the back of my mind, I'm wondering if we need more like this.
Sounds like we're gonna take some of Hurricane's business.
Yeah, I'm gonna think about that one for a while. I had no idea. That's, I might win some money betting somebody on that. Like, I also heard when it's all grown out, Hurricane will be bigger than all the other areas here in town as regards to people, right?
Eventually.
Yeah, it's crazy. Commissioners, any additional, any other additional questions for staff before I open this up to the public hearing? All right, thanks, Eldon. Appreciate it. This is a public hearing. I'll go ahead and I'll open the public hearing portion of the meeting for this particular item. For those of you that are not familiar with our public hearings, we'd ask that you please state your name for the record. Melody is in the back room, or another room, taking notes for our minutes for this meeting. So please speak as clearly as you can, and we ask that you try to limit your comments to three minutes if you can. The purpose of it is to get your comment on the record. It will go to city council, and they'll have a chance to review that when they're reviewing this project after we go through it this evening. So if you'd like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Yes, hi commissioners. My name is Kurt Butler. I live in the Chaparral community, right across the street, basically, from where this is gonna go. I have two questions. What is going to be done to mitigate the horrible traffic that this will bring so that it makes our community safe? Second question, where's the water gonna come from to support 123 rooms that are gonna have laundry, that are gonna have consumption of water while they're there for bathing and everything else? Meanwhile, excuse me, meanwhile, we've been told we have to conserve. I understand that really what I say is of no consequence because the people there have a whole lot more money than I do. But I would hope, and given the prayer that we've had and the pledge allegiance that we've done, that you really look at justice for all instead of those who have money.
Anybody else here in the chamber like to speak to this item?
What's up, Greg? Greg McCombs, Sienna Hills. Can you zoom in on the site map? Because I can't find North Primavera Lane on my map. I'd just like to know where it's at.
Is this the new Maverick right down here from my arrow is?
Yes.
And it's back here by the, the water.
Primavera Lane.
Primavera's right there.
Directly across, that would be right, and that's the big hotel that's on there. Now, this is already approved for maximum development.
And my second question is, what type of construction is it gonna be? Wood framed, steel framed?
That'll be determined by the architect when they submit their plans. On this, at this particular level, we don't get into the building materials. We just have it reviewed through the building department to make sure they're sufficient for the building code.
Thank you. Drew, are these hotels owned by the same person?
I am 90% sure they are.
I think so.
Or will be, yes.
Okay.
And they always planned when they put the first one in to come a couple of years later and bring number two.
Yeah.
And we've just been, it was not a question of if, but just when.
Do we have anything planned for that piece of property on the right of that road that cuts right through there?
Well, I think, Eldon, didn't they already approve a CUP on that a couple of months ago?
What was that one for?
It's a restaurant and what else? Come on up.
I think I wasn't here.
The bigger piece, right? Is that the one we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, a motel, and then there's some, two drag-throughs and some retail on the south end.
I wasn't here. Okay, thank you. I don't remember hearing about that piece. Because isn't QuikWack, like, right in front of it?
QuikWack.
Yeah, I wasn't here there. I wasn't here. Maybe that's a secret. Hey, Rusty.
Rusty Hughes, Economic Development. I just wanted to point your attention, Drew, if you could go to our city website, just as a resource for both the commission, council, residents, this is available to anyone. If you go to washingtoncity.org, then you click on development, and then economic development. So the top development, and then economic development. There's a new developments map. So if you go, click on the upper right-hand corner, right-hand corner, yep, that will enlarge the map. You can view anything that's been approved. So you can see the gold stars are commercial businesses, the purple stars are industrial projects, and then we have housing, both at preliminary plat and final plat. We also have city utility projects, new parks and trails. If you go to the menu on the left-hand side and click, click the down arrow just under new commercial towards the bottom there. This will list each development. If you click on the development, then, if you click on one of those, Drew, then it will actually enlarge that, and there'll be photos that you can scroll through that have been in the public meetings. So there's the Maverick. It has all of the public information. And then if you click on the photo above, it will enlarge, and you can scroll through those renderings. This is available to anyone in the public that has questions about this. I know we get these a lot, so this is updated twice a month. We update this, so it's ongoing.
Rusty, are you gonna, do you plan on attending all future planning commission meetings, or is it kind of hit or miss?
I'm here most of the time, most meetings, yeah.
I think it'd be great. I think I might put it in at the beginning of every planning commission meeting when we have people here, that you do something like this, because I think it's good. You mentioned it just last time, and I think it's great to see it, the public to see it, and spread the word as much as we can, so.
I know it, I get a lot of phone calls about what's going here, what's going there. There's a lot of buzz on social media. They don't always have the information, but this is what's, what's been made public, and then it is updated regularly, so you can, you can view that. And then if there are any specific questions about it, the commercial ones, I'm happy to answer those for residents and commission as well. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anybody else for this particular item? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and I will turn the time over back to you commissioners if you have additional questions for staff. And if we don't have any additional questions, I want to get back to Kurt, so I don't want to ignore his questions. Kurt, just so you know, I've been on the commission for, I don't know, five or six years now. I remember when this project came before the other hotel was built. And so we've known this was gonna be a second hotel for quite a while here at this location. It just hasn't made it right or wrong, it's just, we've known that it's been there. But I will say, and I'm gonna ask probably Thad in a minute, unless Drew wants to jump in and take this, but I know Thad's, I think, more versed on the water. We get the questions you ask those to, almost on every single project, the traffic, and one lady almost threw a water bottle at me one day, and she was like, "Where's the water gonna come from?" And I was sitting over there, and we all thought she was gonna throw it. Do you remember that, when that lady threw, she had the water bottle, and she went like this, and I was like, okay. So water comes up quite a bit. It's my understanding from what we have been instructed, whether residents want to believe it or not, we don't have the water crisis that's been maybe portrayed that we have right now. Is it possible? Sure. Do we have it right now? No. Why don't you come up here and do it here, just so we can have it on the record?
I'll jump in right there. Then why on?
State train again.
Oh, yeah, Kurt Butler again. So if water is a non-issue, why are we told to conserve? And why, on Washington City's own website, do they have a form that developers have to fill out and submit that has them state, "We understand there's no guarantee of water"?
Right.
I'll answer, I'll answer that question, since I wrote that document. We live in a desert, and conservation of our water resources isn't an important issue, and...
But we just got told that it's a non-issue.
Let me finish.
Um, wait, don't, where is it right now?
Let me answer your question. As of today, our water wholesaler is issuing connection permits to those applicants that meet the criteria. So as of today, water is available to new development applications. State law requires that we accept those applications, that we review them pursuant to state requirements and city code, and then we give them an answer. So there's, there's state law that requires that planning commissions and city councils look at applications and approve them if they meet criteria. One of those criteria is availability of water. Our water wholesaler, the Washington County Water Conservancy District, has told us there's water connections available to applicants. That's why the answers are how they are. Now, that statement that we require applicants sign is our careful, us having caution, that if our wholesaler comes in and says there's no more water, applicants that came in thinking there was water may not actually get to connect. Applicants that are hoping to see the commission next week may not get to have a decision entered because there won't be any water available to even commit to that project. But right now, we are told that water is available to commit to applicant projects, and state law requires that we receive the applications and we process them through our land use or process.
And at what point in time are you guys gonna say no?
When we're told there's no more connections available, we'll say no.
When dust comes from the tap.
At planning commission, it's much more black and white. We have to just look at, does it meet city code or not? Does it meet state law or not? We, it's not a personal opinion whether we think we should or not. We have to be very black and white. Does it meet the code or not? And that's, it doesn't matter whether we want something or not, or, it's, it's not what our job is. Our job is, does it meet the code? Yes or no? And like he was saying, and I think the reason that Commissioner Hanson was saying it's an on-issue, I think what he's meaning is that we don't make that decision whether the water's there. It's made by the Water Conservancy District. They're the ones that make that call. We don't have the right to arbitrarily make that call. If they say there's water, then we, we look at the project per code. If they say there's no water, then we say, okay, there's no water. I mean, that's, it's just not up to us, that's all. So state law allows land applicants to entitle their land even if there isn't water. So they could come in and make a zone change. They would not be able to receive connections to the water system unless and until there was sufficient water to supply that connection. The best place for this, for your questions, would be at the Water Conservancy District Board meetings, because they're the only ones that can make these decisions. So that, that would be the perfect place for these kind of questions, because they have the power to make those decisions.
And they told me to come here.
Well, they sell the water to the city, so I mean, it's, it's up to them. Yeah, we're, we're happy to answer your questions here. We, we think and worry about water every single day of every single week. Nobody here is saying the city's not concerned about water. The city's studying our water resources. We've got a water master plan study underway right now. We constantly and continually worry about water. You don't know my personal opinions about whether or not things are gonna be, but the reality is, is the system as it's built in this area, the reservoir system, the water treatment system, there are sufficient water supplies to justify new applications. The water district is receiving impact fee payments from applicants that want to connect. When they make that payment, our agreement with the water district is that we'll allow them to connect to our utility system, and then we'll service that water through our retail system.
And what about the traffic?
With any development, it's gonna bring traffic with it. Our job is not to stop development. Every landowner has their opportunity to sell land. Like I mentioned, this has been planned for this project right here, that probably, I'm gonna say five years, it could be six. I know, early on, I saw this before the other ones were built.
They are, to my understanding, re, they're gonna rework that exit on exit 10.
Yeah, it could have been before I was on the commission, for sure, like you're saying.
But that exit 10 is gonna be changed, the way they exit.
It was, traffic comes development. The city hasn't ever once mentioned, anytime that I've been around to the planning commission, that there's a hint of a moratorium on building, whether it's commercial or residential, in Washington to try to slow or stop the growth. And so the growth's coming, whether you, I, or anybody up here, anybody in the room likes it or not, it's coming. People want to live here, and people own land here, and state law gives them the opportunity and right to sell their land, and we're not ones to shut it down and say you can't do it. As long as they meet the code that we have here in town, and it's, if it's scheduled to be commercial in that area, which it is, and the commercial project comes to us, we go ahead and let them build that. We're not in the position to, to say, no, you can't do that. If we were, if we didn't like this project, we could all vote no and send it to city council and say, we recommend that you deny this. And then the city council gets to decide, but they're gonna look at the same thing. I mean, if you own that land and you wanted to build a hotel there, and the city has it zoned for a hotel, it's very difficult for the city, or certainly the planning commission, to say, yeah, you can't do that. You have every right to do that.
Can you at least recommend some kind of traffic flow mitigation in that area?
There's traffic studies that are submitted with all of the applications that come in like this. There is a traffic study that was done. And if, and if it's a problem, then it shows up to us, and I don't see, what we see in the, the flow chart that we have from all the different departments in, in the city, there isn't any problem with any of them. All green. It kind of looks like this. So if traffic was an issue, we would see it, and we'd start to act.
That intersection by the freeways, all an issue before the Maverick wind in. It's gotten exponentially worse since.
As a driver, but this isn't gonna, yeah, that's not gonna change my opinion. I don't know if anybody up here of this particular project, they've met it. Yeah, we could talk all night about it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, if you guys want to talk to them, Kurt, are you familiar with the exit being changed, and that UDOT's working on that, and adding a new exit here in town?
Yeah, I thought they left the airport 20 years from now if we're done.
Okay. Is there anything positive you want to say, Kurt, while you're here, or no?
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. We'll see ya. Okay, I already closed the public hearing, so I guess I'll close it twice. I'll come back to you commissioners. Are there any other comments or questions that you have for staff? If not, I'll look for a motion to pass this item. I'm sorry. I'll look for a motion on this particular item.
So that button's up to Maverick and going?
No.
You've got some retail going over there. You have the car wash.
You got the car wash going in right.
Which way is, which way is it oriented based on your course?
Well, the car, sorry, the car.
This hotel, where's it oriented on this?
It's on that.
It goes right here. If you follow, can you see my arrow? Let me zoom in.
Okay.
So you can see it starts up here, and then bends and heads down this way. So it's toward the golf course over here.
Okay, so that, that was my question, is, so the traffic coming from this, it's not dumping onto Green Springs directly, it's going into Primavera, and then they can either go
Right.
out this way, or they can drop down.
Yeah, they can take it, they can take it out here to the west or go to the south.
So it'll split the traffic on that.
Yeah, because these roads are being built right now, this extension of Primavera, and the other one's already in, but they'll have, they can come and go out either west or south. The car wash is on this 834 address you see here. This one's vacant right now. And then there's a proposal maybe coming to you in the next couple of months on this, this piece over here, this seven, whatever that is.
Typically, hotels don't typically increase traffic. They usually soak it up, because people go and they park. I mean, every time you go to one of these hotels like this that are kind of off the freeway, you got nobody on the road there. I mean, the Maverick and the car wash and everything are gonna be the...
I mean, the Maverick and the car wash and everything are going to be the, a lot bigger source of traffic than the, than this hotel is.
I see it's time for a hotel is always between nine and 10, because that's checkout time, right? But the other than that, it's pretty, pretty, you know. I'm, I, I, I'm not sure, I wasn't here that night myself, but I think the hotel was on this, this part of the piece where my arrow is, and then the QSRs are down here, if I remember right.
It's a lot of broken windows. From golf balls.
There is a big golf net there. You can see the poles, Drew, if you zoom in, they'll be able to see those poles along there.
Those, those lines that, that are going up, that's actually poles that hold up a huge net. And if you saw on the, the plan.
I'll just share my personal testimony that when you hit those poles with a golf ball, it has a real nice metallic ring to it.
As you can see on the drawing here, where my arrow is, that's the existing net that they built years ago in anticipation for this hotel, so.
Is the developer here by chance? Is, is, does the owner own both hotels?
Derek Wiggins, Reflect Architecture, yes, they do. Yeah, and they will be extending the net a little bit, but it's most of the way. I think you've got a red note there that says where the new portion is. And I can answer a few more of your questions if you guys would like.
Can you fix the traffic?
Absolutely not.
What about water? You got that one? I don't have any questions for you, but you guys have.
This is Commissioner Anderson, while you're here, I, I am curious, because I know we don't have the lighting plan here, but since we talked about lighting, what is, what is the plan to try and mitigate light pollution?
Yeah, absolutely. So we're required to provide what's called full cutoff lighting, so no outward directional lighting or any uplighting is permitted. As Drew kind of discussed, there are remedies for lights that don't meet those requirements. But on our plans, we make sure that all the lights do meet the full cutoff requirement. And then additionally, we're required to provide what's called a photometric plan, which measures the foot candles of light on the property. And we ensure that no more than, I think in Washington City, they don't have a number, like St. George City says, no more than one foot candle crosses your property line. And so we'll provide a photometric plan that indicates that. So in Washington City, where they haven't said a foot candle measure, we'll just do zero foot candles cross the property line. So, thanks.
Derek, can you just give me a little, real brief explanation on the netting? I know that there's, there's been some correspondence with the owners in my office about that netting. The city is open to the extension. We did, we do have the golf course staff that want to make sure they're a part of that. Do, do you know anything on the extension or the idea there?
No, I wasn't involved in the, the last netting coordination. The owners handled that themselves, and I had imagined they're going to pursue the same avenue, and I can definitely relay that message. I know a few of them are listening to this meeting, so.
Yeah, we've had several back and forths. There was an original easement document. I suggested that the avenue would be to amend that easement document with a new legal description that includes whatever the extension area is, but staff will want to meet on site and agree on that before we can move forward.
Okay, and I don't see any reason why they wouldn't agree to that, so.
Come on up and state your name, please.
Yeah, Mike Webster, I'm with Penn Bridge Lodging. So I, I spoke with you and also spoke with the folks at the golf course and met with, I can't remember his name, over on the golf course about the extension of the netting, and he, he walked it off. He thought it was already, he thought it was approved already for the extension, and we went back and forth on email. And so I, we're completely open to meeting with the golf course staff and, and, you know, putting that netting in the correct place to protect the hotel that will be built down to the end of the site. So, yeah, I think, I think, I can't remember the gentleman's name that I spoke with, but I think he was the director there at Green Springs.
Yeah, I think, I think what's needed is, we'll need to be able to walk it and stake it so that it can be then surveyed and that survey line added to the amended easement agreement.
Yep, absolutely, and we're totally open to, to making it exactly how Washington City wants it, so. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson asked if that needed to be a condition on approval, and I don't think it does. That'll be a, just a, an accommodation the city works on, on the side, but I don't, the nets to protect them, if they don't choose to pursue it, that's their choice. I, I don't think you should make it a condition on whether or not you approve or deny their project.
Yeah.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve C-23-06, request for conditional use permit for hotel located at 84 North Primavera Lane with the four findings and 11 conditions outlined by staff, and send it to City Council for consideration.
Ms. Sheal, I second. I have a motion by Anderson, a second by Sheal, individual voting Anderson.
Aye.
Sheal?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an aye as well. The motion passes, we'll send that to the City Council with our recommendation for approval. Thanks, guys, for coming. Item number 5A is also a public hearing for consideration and recommendation to the City Council for Desert Haven Townhomes Phase 3, amended preliminary plat located approximately 4,300 South, 600 East. The applicant is Civil Science, and I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, Commissioners. On April 13th, 2022, City Council approved the preliminary plat for Findlay Farms Townhomes Phase 3, which has since changed the name of the development to Desert Haven Townhomes. I just wanted to make that connection there. During the preliminary plat approval, City Council added the condition, and I'll paraphrase, that Weatherby Way shall be fully constructed or a temporary 26-foot asphalt be laid at the developer's expense to come in with their development. The relocation of the NRCS line has taken longer than anticipated, and the applicant is asking to remove the condition that was added by City Council requiring Weatherby Way to be asphalt, and no other changes are being made at this time. Staff has no recommendation as this, as the applicant is asking to remove the condition added by City Council during the preliminary plat approval on April 13th, 2022, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Can you answer or tell us what NRCS is? I looked it up, it said Natural Resource Conservancy, Conservis- District, or Service.
I can, I can talk to that. So the NRCS is a federal agency, the National Resource Conservation Service.
Can't read my own writing, I'm sorry.
What, what is in there is decades ago, there were, there were structures built up in Warner Valley. When you get, when you get right to the summit of the Warner Valley Road, there's a dam off to the left, and then there's a couple of debris, debris places below that. There's a storm drain line, which is called the NRCS line, because the NRCS built it under a federal project decades and decades ago. That storm drain is old, and we want to locate it within a roadway instead of through, you know, private land. And so the county sought funding to help relocate that line through the various cities that it crosses. It starts in our city at Warner Valley, it'll pass through this project onto St. George, and so for our planning, we wanted to locate it within Weatherby Way. Right now, it's up along the, the foot of the slope to the south of Weatherby Way's alignment, and it would be pulled, it wouldn't be pulled out of the ground. The county is leaving the landowners with the responsibility to remove the old one, but they would install a new, new line in the roadway that would replace and decommission the old line.
So then what, what exactly are they waiting on, and what are they asking us to waive?
So council issued a, a condition that Weatherby Way be connected from Washington Fields Road throughout the, past these projects. There's been a number of financial issues and developer changes that have held that up. The city entered a, an agreement with the original developer who's no longer present for most of the phases, where he would post a cash bond in an amount determined by engineer estimate for the cost of construction of Weatherby Way. That developer was not able to post that cash bond, and so we've been in delay for months and months. They weren't able to post the bond, they weren't able to comply with the terms of the agreement. Now, the successors to most of those phases, who were, who are generally the lenders of that, of that developer, the lenders who took back the phases on default of the loans, is now wanting to develop the same phases and is willing to enter a similar agreement where he would fund a cash bond. The City Council's interest was to make sure that that road got built fully from Washington Fields Road to the St. George Boundary on the Southwest, and that's the commitment that's been made so far. This project is asking that that condition be waived as it relates to them because of some of the access points you see there.
So it's not, this is Commissioner Mitchell, this is not due to the delay on that new pipeline? That has nothing to do with them asking? I guess at first I was thinking they were wanting to change it because the delay on the new line coming through, but that has nothing to do with?
Well, I, I'm not willing to say nothing. The new pipeline is a layer in the complication out here. The new pipeline, the city has always maintained the position that we don't want the road finished until the new pipeline is in there, so that a new road doesn't get dug up in 90 days for the new pipeline. So we wanted the new pipeline to go first. The developer had two financial commitments to the city. One was to fund the developer's portion of the NRCS relocation. The county got funding, but the developer needed to contribute some funding to make that work. And then, then the developer needed to fund the bond for the road. The developer didn't fund either, and so because he didn't fund the NRCS line, it never got off the ground. The county just sat on their funding, waiting for somebody to come to the table. The new, the new owner funded that portion, as well as the other. And the way it's working is the individual owners of these phases are all contributing, pursuing an agreement they have, they're kind of pro-rata share of what needs to be contributed. But the, the new group out there has paid that, so the NRCS line can go, can get built, which that hadn't happened last time. But, and so it was an important element, but their request here is mostly because they would like access sooner than Weatherby Way might be built. So that's the crux of their request, is they would like to move forward before Weatherby Way is actually fully completed.
And so can that be done with the bond, so that when it does happen, the road's paid for and can go in? Or if we give them the right to eliminate it, does that make the city responsible to put it in in a future date?
So I would suggest on this, because it's a planning, because it's a City Council condition, I would let those decision points, let, rest with them. I would suggest that tonight you decide whether they have the right to go to the planning, to the City Council and have that conversation. Staff tries not to modify or interpret con, conditions from the council, and I think the council need to look at this and decide whether it satisfies the reasons why they put that condition in place in the first place. You're asking two really good questions that I think, from a staff standpoint, we want the council to answer for us and for the applicant.
This is Commissioner Anderson, so are they, I mean, I guess they're not here, but are, are they looking to not build the road?
They do have a representative here, if you'd like to talk to them.
They do, okay. So I guess I have a question for the representative then.
Please state your name for the record, thanks.
Mike Uselak with Desert Haven.
This is Commissioner Anderson, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around exactly what you guys want versus what City Council wants, and make sure we cover the bases based on, you know, what our city attorney just said. So when, when would the, when would Weatherby Way be, be going in? We're talking at the end of Phase 1? Are we talking another phase?
So Weatherby Way is not our responsibility, other than our frontage. That's all of the previous developer, Findlay Farms. So what we're asking for is, the condition was put on us, is that they wanted us to put that road in and blacktop it, which at the time made sense, but, you know, that was, that road is supposed to be probably six or nine months ago going in, along with the NRCS line. So since they haven't posted their bonds, what we're asking for is that that road, we just do a fire road, which is road base, so that when we have to take it out, we're not, I mean, you know, we're, we're contributing the funds to the Weatherby, and we're also building a temporary road with asphalt, that my understanding, within the next eight to 10 weeks, they're going to start tearing it out.
I'm going to add a little bit of layer here. At the same time, this applicant is participating with the new developer with a full funding of Weatherby Way, which might make all of this a point.
The new developer of Findlay Farms?
Of the other phases.
Okay.
So the phases next door have responsibility for this road. So they're being, they're a positive participant there. Essentially, they're saying, let us go talk with the council and see if they'll alleviate this condition's effect on our project, and here's the reasons and things we've done to help, you know, mitigate that. At the same time, if the, if the new developer's proposal actually gets funded and moves forward, they're, they're likely to not even need this solution, they'll just go through with the road as it gets built. They're wanting to have this because they've been delayed long enough that they don't want to continue to be subject to delay if the Weatherby Way road solution has another hiccup or doesn't come through. And so they're, they're, they've got a two-pronged commitment, and they've been participating positively on both of them.
So this is Commissioner Anderson, and so you, so the storm drain won't go in until Findlay Farms does the rest of Weatherby Way then? Is that why you want to only do road base here, or so you can?
The storm drain goes in first, and then they'll follow up on Weatherby Way with all of the infrastructure, and we're basically on top of where they're going to do all their work.
So I'm just, I'm just wondering, what, what's the reason for only wanting to do road base right now?
Just.
Just for your frontage part, not for the whole thing, obviously?
No, I, I have to do the whole thing, all the way out to Washington Fields.
Okay. You're just waiting for them to commit the money and so forth?
Well, and, and, yeah, I mean.
So you don't have to tear it up?
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, we're just putting in $100,000 worth of asphalt in 10 weeks to tear it out.
No, and that's, that's, I'm just trying to get your timeline.
So that's, that's what we're looking at, you know, we're to a point now where, you know, we thought that would all be going in, and, you know, we'd participate as need be, but, you know, we don't want to spend money we don't need to, we might as well put it towards Weatherby Way.
Right. What, what are the other, what, what's the access here, Drew? Can you zoom out? Like if, if Weatherby Way is not built yet, I mean, is that the only access in here, or what do we have up top? I guess what's the current finished access in there? I guess you could answer that, too.
Yeah. So it's 4290, which is to the north of us, and we'll finish that road, it's not finished now, over to 545, and then at 545, they can go east, or, excuse me, west, or they can go north to Exit. But we'll still put something in over there, so we can try to mitigate construction coming that direction. We just prefer to not do it on asphalt.
Okay, thank you.
I thought you said you were going to do just road base, but now you're saying you're going to do asphalt. No, instead of the asphalt. Road base now. Yeah. Put the infrastructure in, then we'll do the asphalt, correct? Yeah, and that, like I said, we'll participate in that with the, the new developer on the rest of Findlay Farms.
Sorry, I've lost everything. I'm trying to get it back.
Mike, thank you. We might call you up again, but thank you. This is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open it, Commissioners, so hold additional questions or comments that you have while Drew is trying to get back online here.
Well, IT's going to have to help me, I just hold tight for a minute.
Oh, is that one? I'm going to go, but I am going to open the public hearing. If there's anybody in the chamber that would like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name for the record. We also did not receive any comments that were submitted online on this item, so we do not have any comments. It does not look like there's anybody here in the chamber that would like to speak to this item, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on item number 5A, and I'll turn the time back over to Commissioners for any additional questions that you have. My thoughts on this, Commissioners, is that the developer, that, Thad has mentioned the developer's working with the city, they're, it's a positive thing, it's not- developers working with the city, they're, it's a positive thing, it's not something that's been negative, I can understand. I would like to not see the development stop out there. They've already, there's a lot of development started and going, I'd like just to not hold it up if we didn't need to. And the, with the applicant being willing and able and working with the city in the best possible scenario, personally, I don't feel like I have a problem submitting this to city council, letting them decide. I don't, I'm not even trying to tell them one way or the other, let's let the applicant get to city council and talk to them, they're the ones that made the commission, condition on it, let's let them decide, that's kind of how I feel about it.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I agree. At first, when I read through the documents, I was maybe opposed, because I thought they were just trying to get out and do the roads, like finish development, but it makes complete sense to me to wait, get the rest of the, the NR whatever line in, then, then pave the road, then you'll have a nice road that doesn't get tore up.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I mean, ultimately, the, the condition by city council, as far as I understand, is they want to make sure this road gets built. And the applicant here has already committed money to the NRCS line, and he's willing to do the rest of the road as soon as he gets money from the other participants. And he just doesn't want to be held up on the entire project until then, which is fair. I mean, the only, the only negative thing would be, let's say the other people don't contribute any money, and suddenly then, you know, the road doesn't get built. But if, you know, at the end of the day, he's got to build this road and the road to the north, because he has to have connectivity to be able to record his plats and so forth. So I mean, he's a willing participant here, he's, he's helping out, and I think, let it go to council, let them go on it.
Yep. If there's no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion on this item. Mike, thanks for, or Mike, where'd you go? Thanks for working with the city. I mean, we've had some people in here in the past, not too distant future, that weren't so kind in working with the city. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
This is Commissioner Anderson. I'll make a motion to approve the amended preliminary plat for Desert Haven Townhome subdivision, located at 4300 South, 600 East. With the two findings and the conditions outlined by staff, with the, with the note that city council needs to look at, at the special condition they put on, and we recommend that they work with the applicant to, to move the project forward.
This is Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Tuppo. Individual voting Anderson.
Aye.
Shiel?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
Mitchell?
I'm Hanson, I'm an a as well. This item passed unanimously, we'll send that to city council with our recommendation for approval. Thanks again for coming, Mike. Item number six, this is a general plan land use map amendment. And this is a public hearing as well, and consideration and recommendation to the city council, to amend the general plan land use map, modifying certain open space areas and moving the affected areas into the not yet determined land use designation. Turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you, commissioners. State Washington City is seeking to amend the general plan use scenarios throughout the city limits. Many of the currently designated areas labeled as open space are being amended to the designation of not yet determined. This change in amendment is to help with the public's understanding of land that has been set aside for future determination of specific land uses or development plans. For years, the planning commission city council have heard from the public, through the public hearing process, that they thought or understood that those items that were labeled as open space designation was permanent designation, set in stone and not to be changed. In reality, jurisdictions, including ours as well, have always set aside acres of undeveloped land into designation of open space as a placeholder to see how development would be driven by land use demand or land use needs of property owners, the city, and/or its citizens. This amendment would leave the Tortoise Reserve, Shinob Kib area, and several of the sheer steeped ridges on the southeast side of the city, near the Warner Valley area, to remain in that open space designation, while the remaining of the current areas labeled open space being moved into the not yet determined general plan designation. Staffs reviewed the requested change and is supportive of the proposal, find it to be in harmony with the general plan and its intent and/or its purposes. Therefore, staff would like to recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of G-23-04 to amend certain areas as shown in the general plan land use map, from the current open space to the proposed not yet determined designation, as outlined above and shown in the exhibit and attached into your, your file there, and that would be on to the city council. I'm just going to give you an example here, because it, right here in the north part, what we're leaving, of course, is, and I'll move my arrow around, sorry, I gotta bring the mic over a little closer. This is the Tortoise Reserve, that's been there for years, everybody knows where the Tortoise Reserve, it's got many trails, et cetera. That we know is because it's BLM land mostly, and it is a protected area. We're just leaving it in open space, because we should not have, at least for many, many, many years, if it even if possible, anybody coming in to change that designation. It's Tortoise Reserve. This area over here has kind of been in that, that thing, but you can see, this is an area that's going to be used for the northern corridor, the northern parkway, whatever they end up calling it. This area could have proposals for people to come in and change from open space to another designation. So this is a good example of saying not yet determined, that we move that out. As you go through some of these PCDs that had open space designated in them, we took all those open space ones, and just, just for the sake of, in case the future brings somebody wanting to try something, we took them and put them into this N Y D or not yet determined zone. Again, so every other open space area within the city except for, and again, I will scroll down here, and you'll find, this particular area right here has the open space still with it. That's Shinob Kib, that's that area that, again, owned by BLM, it's Indian ground, it's just going to stay in the open space. And then the other area that we're going to leave in open space are these two steep ridges down here in the Warner Valley area. You can see this particular one, that's going to be designated as open space. But as you can see over here in other areas, that we just came and gave the not yet determined for people to make application. It really won't change a lot, other than perception of people, when they look at the general plan, they'll see an N Y D if they're looking at buying a home by there, and it basically is straightforward, it's not yet determined yet, that'll come at a future date. So that's what we're hoping that this, this change does, is just make perception a lot easier as people go forward and are purchasing homes or, or things in the future. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that the commission has before you go on your public hearing on this application.
Is the idea, Drew, to get as much as possible into not yet determined, just so it's simpler for the public to understand that we don't have the issues?
Yeah. Because again, some people felt like when they read or saw open space, that it, for whatever reason, they thought it would, you know, that's what it is and will always remain that, and that's not, you know, what the open space is always, it's been used for some of those, but for other, other properties, and many, again, we're not, we're one of hundreds and hundreds of cities that, that do the same thing used to with the open space, they just put it in there as a placeholder until something came along for development, and then they'd do a general plan amendment and move forward. So this way, people know that it's not yet determined, at a future date, it will be determined, what that will be as, as development goes forward. So that's the intent of, you know, that's behind this, this change.
The, the city council was trying to administer a change from folks who would come and say, I built next door and was told by the realtor, Doug Shiel, that that would always be available for my dog's exercise, right? No, they never said Doug Shiel. But, but they're always blaming the realtors for telling them that that land was open space forever. And the challenge is, it would be true to say that that land was designated open space on the zoning map and, or the general, zoning map in some condit, some, some, in some of the scenarios, it probably did say open space at the time it was sold, right? In the future, there's not yet determined areas today that'll probably be open space, either because it's not buildable, because the owner determines it's not worth trying to mitigate the hillsides and other reasons to build, or because a community comes in that says, we want to designate all that open space, right? But as far as the zoning map goes, we're trying to address that, that concern area where somebody shows up thinking they were next to perennial open spaces, and they're at an application for a landowner that wants to build there.
Is there a reason why there's a not yet determined weird slice, kind of off of exit 13, off, like across the freeway from the ridge, the Coral Canyon Ridge there, like back behind where those apartments are going to go? Why is that there? It's, um, it's, if you, right where that 15 is, on the, the lower one? Yeah, right, like right in the middle of the map? Yeah, why is that there?
Because it's private owned.
It's privately owned.
What can, I mean, would you have to have an off ramp to get there, or how would you even-
They would, and that would be if they came in and asked for a, to turn it to, say, PUD designation, we'd say, well, okay, how are you going to get there? And so staff would say, well, staff's going to recommend denial, because there's no way for them to get there.
Can't, except for bike under the freeway, is there like a-
So the Elevate project that you've heard a few times, that, that, that corner you're asking about is owned by the same owner?
And you, could you access that under the freeway with that bike tunnel? No?
Not with, not with what we would call public access, no.
But that would count toward their open space for their project?
Right, right. Say they came in and they went and met with UDOT, and UDOT was willing to work with them to put a, an underpass, you know, or bore through there, and put that in, and they went in and they showed us that they've accepted their proposal, that could be done, then you could consider giving that a different designation, right? But as of right now, staff would say, we'd recommend to you to not approve that, that one, to whatever they were asking, just because of access issues. And unless they had something to show you that they could get that mitigated, then I would recommend, and hopefully the planning commission would follow suit and not change it to anything, because they can't get to it, it doesn't do any good to do so. But because it's privately owned, and who knows what the future holds, I just felt that I'm only going to leave the ones I know 98% sure that are not going to change in the next 20, 30 years, and I feel strongly that the Tortoise Reserve is going to remain that for, for quite a while. I feel the same way about Shinob Kib, it's not going to be changing, just because of its terrain, right? And then those peak, those sheer peaks down there by the Warner Valley area, I just felt like, nobody can even mitigate that out, so I'm going to leave that in open space.
Yeah.
But everywhere else, I felt, even down the river, I thought, no, that'll never happen. I'm going, no, I've 30 years in the business, yeah, I've seen people come in and get Lomars or Clomars, and, and have done mitigating circumstances to go in rivers, you know, as long as they meet all that. So I said, I'm not going to, I'll leave that not yet determined if someone can come with a plan, because I have seen that happen. That's not out of, out of, you know, question to see something like that, so I just put it in.
Does anybody know what Saint, does Saint George have a not yet determined?
I don't. I haven't looked.
It'd be really nice, distant, and then we could hand and say, from that day forward, I'll start to pick up on determined. I mean, is that wishful thinking? Even Doug Shiel?
Even Doug Shiel. It'd be nice though.
It's, it's hard, because agents have an incentive to close a deal.
Yeah.
And if it's zoned open space at that time, they're not being deceitful to say it is open space, right? And so it's, the, the communication between agents and selling, selling owners and buyers is constantly being accused, not accused, but just referenced as, you know, not what people are seeing at the, at the, at the public hearing this week. And I just don't know how to solve that problem. I, I think our job is to educate partially through what we do, and we'll just keep educating folks the best we can, and I think the city council's objective here was to help with just public education.
Yeah.
Will it be, will it be perfect?
Yeah, no, I love the idea, like, out there by me, Warner Gateway, behind it, is one of the pieces that's on here, and I've had a couple of those people say, oh, nothing will ever be built there. And I'm like, well, I wouldn't say so. I know it's a floodplain, but I still think, whatever. But it is, I think it's all about education. The gentleman that's here this evening, I think there just needs to be education on many different fronts, and it would, would answer a lot of the questions that the public has, so I can appreciate what we're doing here in the city.
And we also live in an area where, for the past three years, homes were being purchased without anybody even seeing them, just a paper was sent and the docu-sign was signed in another state. The due diligence has not been robust. Our area's been hot enough in demand that people weren't even talking to realtors, right? It was just contact the listing, is it still available? If yes, send me, send me the deposit link, so I can buy this. And so there's some, there's probably some blame that goes to buyers as well.
Yeah. So, did we have a public hearing on this? I don't think we did. We did?
It should be.
Opened it and closed it? I have yeses and I have nos.
We have yet to open it.
We haven't had it yet? All right, everyone, hold on, here it comes. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for this item number 6A. If anybody would like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name for the record. And this one as well, we did not have any public comments submitted earlier, and we do have somebody coming forward.
My name is Dan Johnson, I'm a commercial appraiser, I have office here in Washington City. My only concern with this particular, I think it's a great idea, I deal with this a lot with valuation of property, where there's some misnomer misconception that it's always open space, with review appraisers, with property owners, it, it's constant, so this is a great idea. My only thought and concern is, in Saint George City, they have in the general plan an FP classification for floodplain. If that to extended floodway, it seems a little odd that the, the Virgin River floodway is an NY, will have an N Y D classification. To me, that seems a little odd, and I think that possibly should be one area that maybe should be considered as open space, or even a floodplain classification.
All right, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
So Drew, we're getting rid of open space altogether, right? Like, it's not even going to be a classification we're going to use?
No, it, like I say, it will be used. Those four areas I pointed out, you can still see them on there. I appreciate the comment, the only issue I have with that is that I have literally seen rivers altered, whether by man or, and rivers don't follow anybody's rules. If you know, I mean, when you have a flood come through where the river used to be, when all the waters recede, it's generally not where it started out before the flood came. It gets shifted and, because of erosion and everything, so it's constantly moving. The flood, the flood zone doesn't move, but again, it can be mitigated. And so that's, you know, I'd love to keep it there, but then I think we're right back into the boat we were before, people thinking, well, that will never happen, but someone can still go in and mitigate that, that floodplain. Because again, they don't come and do elevations every 10 feet, FEMA does not do that, they'll, they'll take blanket, you know, from point X to point Y and leave it, and they really don't come and hit everything, that's just, they, they can't do that throughout the whole country. So I appreciate the comment, but I still feel, you know, if, and well, that's fine, that it'll be in the, you know, the minutes to the council, and they can decide what they'd like to do about that, but over the years, I've seen rivers and floodplanes mitigated and moved. So I, I just don't want to be back where we are before, someone thinking that will never happen, when in all reality, it possibly could.
All right. So, Dan, thanks for the comment. City council, there's two members here tonight, I know they're listening to this, so maybe they'll consider that as an option. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and I'll turn it back over to you commissioners for any questions or comments you have for the staff.
Commissioner Anderson, I, I really like this, it's been a long time coming, we've, we've been asking for this for a couple of years, it seems like, and I think this would really help education wise, and we still need to inform people about how to look at the general plan, but this would go a long way. The only thing I would suggest, and I, and I still get the idea that somebody could sell property, but for city council, I, I think that, like the Washington Dome that's owned by the BLM, I think it should be labeled open space, not, not yet determined. Now, I know, I guess, I guess in theory, the BLM could sell it, but where it's super steep hillside and it's all BLM land, I would think that that should be open space, that's kind of a big, huge chunk there. Just my two cents. Just my two cents.
Mr. Commissioner Tuppo, um, I think this is a step in the right dis, right direction. Um, just that NYPD should be not your decision. Just kidding.
What was that, not what?
Not your decision.
Oh, not yours. I like that, I'm making.
How did nobody think of that yet? It got this, it got this far?
This is Scheel, I think it's an education process, and I think, I think, uh, realtors' agents out there need educated, and, because they're, you know, they've gone through, uh, trying to protect themselves, uh, but this would be another protection added that they need to, to have as far as seller's disclosures, maybe this would be part of a seller's disclosures item, and, but they would need to be educated to that effect, and I'm not, I'm not the one to educate them, but maybe the attorneys are.
Education is a lifelong process, and I think we'll always, well, our whole, the full life of this city will be educating citizens about what zoning means.
Well, I don't sell houses, but I know when, when I, uh, sell a commercial property that has OS there, or, uh, two D, determined, or whatever it's gonna be, I'll, uh, for sure have my seller make note of that.
One down, many to go.
That's right.
So this is Commissioner Mitchell, and this isn't a big deal, but on the paperwork that we're given, it calls this item 4A instead of 6A at the top.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm sure that's minimal.
That's right, when it goes to city council, we don't put IVE numbers, cause their agenda changes so often, it's, it never works out, so the staff apologizes for the 4A, it is 6A.
All right, I'll look for, if there's no other comments or questions, I'll look for a motion on 6A.
This is Commissioner Mitchell, I'll make a motion that we approve the G23-04, the request to amend the general plan, land use permit, map. Um, in areas throughout the city limits, many of the current designated areas labeled as open space are being changed to the designation of not yet determined, for better public clarification. And send it to city council for approval.
Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
All right, I've got a, uh, motion by Commissioner Mitchell, a second by Commissioner Tuppo, individual voting Anderson.
Aye.
Scheel?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm in, I as well. The motion passes, we'll send that to city council with the comments from the public, and our recommendation for approval. Last item on the agenda this evening is a conditional use permit review. I can't believe it's been six months, but a six-month review for conditional use permit, C-1-19, Seven Epic Motors LLC, located at 515 West Buena Vista Boulevard. Turn the time over to staff for their report.
I'll just take this one briefly, uh, chairman, um, you're all aware of this, this project, the owner was here but had to leave to go pick up her child, and so I told her I'd speak on her behalf. Um, the city's monitored it for the six-month period that the planning commission requested. Um, even as recently as last week, there was additional ground cover gravel being installed by the landowner to the west of the car lot, and so, um, the city's position is that it has complied with the conditions set by the planning commission, and that it should, should not need to be monitored any further in the future.
Commissioners, any questions for staff on this particular item?
Uh, this is Scheel, I, I kinda disagree. I went by there on Friday afternoon, uh, and it was all, I mean, it, it's definitely cleaned up, uh, it looks to me like it's used as a storage facility rather than a sales lot, it was, it was closed, there was, the entrances were blocked by vehicles, they couldn't get in there. I also went by there today at about four o'clock, and it was very similar, it looked the same way, uh, same vehicles are there, uh, I don't see that we're making any sales there, I don't see any sales tax revenue for the city on that property, I, I don't know why we keep playing with it, but.
So the, the city observes what you've observed, um, the process that this was on for review was not for that issue, we have not informed the owner that the city is bringing action against their permit for non-use. City code allows that. Um, I don't think we can add a non-use condition at this point of the, of the review, I, I think what, what I would like you to say is, you'd like council or staff to look into and start to monitor for whether they're actually operating a, a, a car sale out of there.
Mr. Commissioner Anderson, well, we, so whether it was put in, in the ride-up, or whether that was one of our, at least our verbal conditions, is that, that it start being, showing more activity and more use.
Correct, and, and the applicant has contacted the city, there's days when those driveways have been open, and so the, the discussion among staff is, you know, do we go make sure every car wash is open for business? Generally speaking, the city doesn't, doesn't take a position whether a business opens, but the conditional use permit code does allow the city to decide whether a permit, a conditional use permit is not being used, and that's what the, that's what the review would be here. The first review letter was about mostly accumulations west of the building, and then some of the other details down on the car lot, and so that's the reason the city recommends that that review has been complied with during the six-month period. Um, but we observe what you've described, Commissioner, we, we observe that it seems like cars are the same ones, um, and it seems like they're in the driveway more than they're not.
Did I understand you correctly, that you, your initial comments were that, I, I believe you're speaking from a representative of the city, that you're comfortable with they have complied with what we asked them to?
We believe that they've complied with the initial letter that asked them to bring their, their conditional use permit into con- confirmation with the no debris west of the building condition.
Okay. And then, if we were to take off a review from that indefinitely, and it became an issue again, that that process would start over about 10, okay?
That's correct.
All right.
So during this process, can we make a recommendation that we still would like to see it become more of a functioning, or, I don't know how to say it, or how, how do you make it happen, but you'd, I mean, you'd like to see it function?
Yeah, and you could even ask staff, give staff direction, uh, if you want staff to review it for actual functionality, and, um, I think that'd be a good way for you to give some direction to professional staff, and we'll, we'll, we'll initiate that if that's what you'd like.
I guess, does it meet the zoning that, that it does function, or is it fine to be where it's at and do what it's doing?
If it was straight zoned, you know, like first-stop gas station, they don't ever have to open their doors. They could, they could occupy that and be closed every day of every weekend, the city can't regulate them. Conditional use permits have this added element, which is, if you want a conditional use permit, our code says you need to use it.
Okay. I think what you said, I would, personally, my vote would be to agree with that, that we do ask the staff to review this for that, that it be used under the conditional use permit, that they're actually using it and doing something, cause when I, the, the two times since, I can't believe it's only twice, but that I've gone by there, I thought the same thing, that you didn't, I was like, nothing, I, it did look better west of the building, outside of that, it looked exactly the same to me, and I thought, okay, nothing's happening, but, um, it sounds like that's two separate issues.
Yeah, and it's really a legal issue, since it started with my office and my letter, and, and it stems from our conditional use permit, both the rights it's vests and the responsibilities, I would want the city to send another letter that says, we've monitored this, and it doesn't look like you've changed a single car for 60 days, right? Or whatever the, whatever the details were that we observed, and then we would give them the same process that they just went through.
I, I'd like to see that, commissioners, for me, for my vote, have the staff start that process of review, cause I don't know why we'd be giving them a conditional use permit if they're not gonna use it.
We've already given it, now where the question is, do we revoke it, right? We, and so they had a revocation hearing on just their look and the use of the surface, and this would be a revocation on whether they're actually transacting any business.
Okay.
This is Commissioner Anderson, I, I have to say, it looks cleaner than it did, you know, when we started all this, which is a positive. I don't know if I like regulating that someone has to be successful in their business, I mean, it's like someone coming to your metal shop and saying, oh, it doesn't look like you're doing enough business, I think we should shut you down. You know, I mean, I don't like getting into that role of, I think we should allow people opportunity, not, you know, looking over their shoulder, at the same time, I think it should look orderly at least, it should look like it's trying to be in business and look orderly and clean and presentable, but I don't know if, if we should be getting in the position of, of counting cars and, you know, turning into the, the business police like that. I, I think, I think maybe another six-month review to at least make sure that it, that it, it looks like a, a presentable, orderly, you know, operating business is justifiable. I don't really wanna get into counting how many cars she's had, or look at her books, or any of this other stuff, I just, I don't think we should be doing that.
What would you do, Corey, if six months, we did that, and six months from now it came back and it was exactly the same as it is now?
Well, it doesn't look like this now, just so it, it looks better than this, but I, I, my judgment would be, it, it, it needs to look presentable and orderly, you know, like, like they're trying to, you know, to, to do something other than just store junk.
You could, you could give another six-month review and ask that we just report on whether, how many cars have changed between now and then, and then at that time, you could give a direction if you wanted to.
So I'm, I'm thinking too, I appreciate Corey's comments, I think the only thing that stands out to me that makes it seem like it's not really open, is every time you go by there, there is a, there's a car right in the driveway, like, it's not welcoming, it's kinda different, rather, and you don't see a lot of traffic, not to say that I go by there very often, but the times that I do go by there, it just seems stagnant.
Yeah, so what they've done is, the car is usually changing, they'll use a different car, but it's kind of the same rotation, they've got a food truck there that's a big, blue box truck, that's probably the most recognizable, it's always there, right? And so, we haven't verified, you know, dates and colors of vehicles every month we've gone by there, we, we've taken pictures of the tires that accumulated and the metals and all that other stuff, and so if we were gonna do a review on cars, we would just start to take a picture each time, documenting the number of cars there and what type, and then if those lists look substantially the same over six months, I, I think that you've, you've got your conclusion, right?
Commissioner Tuppo, is there, is there a limit on how many conditional permits, use permits we issue in the city?
No, there's no limit on conditional use permits, there's a couple of business types that are limited, um, specialty nicotine shops have a limit, also tobacco, um, not to, uh, alcohol license, uh, outlets have a limit. Um, this one has really only had one conditional use permit, but it's been subject to revocation a couple times, and, and so, that's, this one's the same original permit, um, which I'm grateful it is, because that original language is what really gave us the teeth to get it cleaned up. But yeah, as, as if it doesn't get revoked, it still hearkens back to the original permit.
So, uh, making sure that they are in operating business, is that overstepping what our function is?
No, the same conditional use permit ordinance that allowed us to call them into revocation for the cleanliness, has a separate section that lets us call them into revocation for lack of use.
Okay.
And, and my caution is, my initial letter to them and the review hearing has never been for lack of use, so I'd wanna give them due, the due process of notice, and then the same process of review of whether or not they're using it.
Okay.
But, but I, I'll, I'll sit here and confirm, I'm not disagreeing with what Commissioner Scheel and others have observed, it, uh, there, there's cars there that have, that are very recognizable, cause we keep seeing them.
Yeah, I think, uh, when we, from what I recall from the prior review, that we wanted them to park their cars to make it look like a lot, and make it look neat, and remove the trailers, and the trailers are still there with stuff stored in them, and obviously it's, the cars are not organized.
I think there's, I think there's fewer trailers and vehicles than before, uh, there were some, it used to be up along the highway, there was kind of a, a boat graveyard, if you will, I think some of that type of stuff has just gone for good, but, but yeah, I, I observe what you're describing as well.
I remember when she came to us, and she broke down in tears, and told us that this was her livelihood, and that she needed to be able to sell cars, and I remember, that was her, the way I recall it, is that was her indication, is that she was going to get back on her feet and start selling cars again. And I know that it's the, the business police type of thing, the only reason I look at this, like, we need to take a better look at it, is cause she's asked the city for a conditional use permit to sell cars there, and that was granted to her, but if she's not selling cars there, then there, she shouldn't have a conditional use permit, it sounds like this has gotten to the, the, the edge of being revoked a couple of times. And I remember telling her when she came, when we see you again, I, I, in so many words, that this should be the last time, there's no reason we should keep seeing you again, and I feel like this is just giving us another opportunity to see her again, I would like to not see her again, she has a conditional use permit, I'd like to see her use it and sell cars, and I could not, along with some of the other commissioners, we could not have been more firm with her, I don't think, in telling her we just didn't want to see her again unless she was gonna sell cars and make it look like a business, and I don't feel like that's happened.
And I don't have the data to tell you she hasn't sold some.
So she might be selling it, we just can't tell.
Yeah, and, and I would also ask that if we're gonna bring it in for revocation on that, we give her due process of fair notice that we're reviewing it for that purpose, but yeah, we, we haven't watched the car count close enough to know whether they're identical, or whether some have come and gone. Um, we might also have the ability to request her sales records to show us, you know, VIN numbers that she's transacted to other buyers and sales, sales transactions, and so, um, I would want us to do that leg, I, I think it's expected of the government to have that much detail if we're gonna bring it to a revocation.
I still vote for the stronger end of everything that I'd say, just because it's come, this is several times, even before I was here, this has happened, so if it's happened several times, I know personally, I felt like I couldn't have been more strong, I feel like there was others on the, uh, commission that said the same, and here we are again, so I'd like to know if she's selling cars, and so I'd like to have that put under review, personally, that's, that goes back, still, that's my vote for this, that it's under review, so we understand, does she make it look better a little bit, is she using it for what she came in and, and tearfully told us she was gonna do in layman's eyes? No, she hasn't been, and so, I'd like to see proof of that, so I'd like to see a review of that, cause otherwise, we're just gonna see it again and again and again, and if they come and she cries to us again, and I, you know, you feel bad for her, but I don't feel bad for somebody that lies to me, and this is borderline lying, me or the, or any of you, and that way I looked at it was, you know, it's hard as the, as any of you can imagine, sitting here being the, the chair, cause your day's gonna come, and have somebody sitting there, and you've gotta, you know, kinda lead the discussion when they're crying, I feel bad for her, I felt terrible for her.
Well, this is Scheel, uh, I know we, we made the condition that she's to sell cars, I don't know if she's making money storing cars, uh, but the way that the openness is with it, I, I think we need to talk about the condition of the vehicles there, they have to be running vehicles, be able to be registered, uh, so I, I think we'd have to tighten up, if she's going to continue to sell cars, they, and they have to be marketable, running vehicles, not up on blocks.
So I, I hear, what I hear, you're saying, and what I still think is that, we need to get stronger, the city needs to do something that goes down a stronger path of revocation for not using it, it's a conditional use permit, I mean, you, they came to the city and wants to use it to, to be in business, and we need to make sure they're in business, cause if they're not, then they shouldn't be having that permit. That's the way, that's the way I look at it.
But is, is it zoned for storage? Can we do outsourced, out, outdoor storage there?
So it's, it's, it's got a conditional use permit for a car dealership, and car dealerships do store cars. do store cars. That's the whole nature of what they are. It's, there's probably some, some interpretation as to where the line goes from storage to sales.
Yeah.
And so that's why, again, I think there's facts that I would expect the government to have a command of before we started revoking permits. And we just haven't, we haven't focused on those facts. We've got tire counts. We've got wood and metal stack counts. We've been counting other details, but not the cars. And so that said, we go, we go by enough that we recognize the food truck, right? We recognize the white Chevy. There's, there's cars there that we do recognize. And we would just, we would begin a more detailed count and process of seeing what comes and goes as far as the cars on the lot.
If she was coming to us day one, asking us for a business use permit, or a conditional use permit, and we could see into the future that this is what it was going to look like, I would have said no. So I just keep thinking that, that I, it's not, I want to go on what she told us tearfully is that she wanted to do that. So I'd like to see if she's doing it. That's all.
So I will tell you, the, the vacant land to the west from there, that owner, and as I met with him through the lot cleanup process, he talked about, well, well, what can I do up here, right? And, and one of the ideas was parking of vehicles, right? That, that he could have a place where vehicles could be parked. One of the ideas was the St. George Shuttle has excess vehicles, right? They could, they could pay him to park along that road, right? And so he never submitted for approval for that. But that was one of the ideas. And so vehicles do need to be parked somewhere. This conditional use permit is for a car sales lot, though. And if that's not selling, it's my opinion that the conditional use permit code would allow us to make a conclusion and recommendation, recommendation, and bring them to a, to a revocation hearing on that basis.
I think that's kind of what's sad because it's ideal location for selling cars. If they turn it into a real dealership, it'd work.
I think it'd be a good spot. I, I think they'd do way better to fence it off and get a conditional use permit for like storage, like it's boat storage, or trailer storage, or outside storage or something. She could actually collect rent on that. I don't think she's collecting any rent on what's there now.
She's just not doing what she told us she was going to do. At least the way I understood it. So, yeah, that's, I mean, that makes more sense than what she's doing now, in my opinion. So that's, again, that's my vote, is that we ask staff to begin a review of, of the sales that have been happening, and, and push this out another six months to look at it again. I just, I'd like to see it being sold. Otherwise, like I said, I would never personally vote for somebody to have a conditional use permit if this is how they were going to use it by not selling. That's what it's there for. And thank goodness, it's not just straight zoning, otherwise we wouldn't have the teeth, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a condition that I think staff would be happy to engage in.
Yeah.
Oh, this is Sheil. I'll take a stab at it. I would recommend or move that staff, excuse me, staff do another six month review for the conditional use permit. C-01-19, Seven, Seven Epic Motors LLC located at 515 West Buena Vista Boulevard, that they do another six month review with conditions on, on business use and orderly conduct. Is that correct? Of, of the property? I just did it.
I think that can take that from there and go with it, correct?
Yeah. It really, really it's, we need to start figuring out what's going on there. And so once we've spent a few months doing that, we'll have a much better control over what's coming and going. And the conversation will be more informed. We just need to get the data so we can have that conversation.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I second that motion.
Do you think?
I have a motion by Commissioner Sheil. I've got a second by Commissioner Mitchell, individual voting Anderson.
Aye.
Sheil.
Aye.
Tupow.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an a as well. That motion passes, and we'll turn that over to the staff for the next six months. Just to point a clarification that, in the next six months, when we see this again, if nothing has changed, or it's in, it's not been, or it's not satisfactory to the city, is that when procedures would start to revoke that conditional use permit at that time?
Correct.
Okay.
What I see you've, you've passed tonight is we've got another six month review period for the original revocation process, which was cleanliness and, and use of the surface. I will begin a process of monitoring if it looks like sales are coming and going. And I could come to you anytime I decide that it does or doesn't. It doesn't, that doesn't necessarily have to be six months. That could be 90 days, right? If, for 90 days, I've still got the same cars, I'm not going to watch them for another 90 days. I'll probably come and let you know that we're going to start a process. But we've got a six month process on the initial revocation, and then an investigation on the other part of our code because of observations that you've all expressed. And then we'll let that investigation tell us what's there and what's, what's leaving and what's not.
And the applicant will be notified of this? Is it by phone call or is it by letter?
Because it, because we're talking about another potential revocation letter, we've had some informal communication with, with staff and others. My office will just start to control this channel again until we see where it's going.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, I don't have anything additional. There is nothing else on the agenda this evening. Is there anything that you need to bring before, that you have that you need to bring before the body tonight? Anything? No? Okay. I'll look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sheil, I'll second that.
We've got a first and a second all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending this evening, and we'll see you again.